Your own records.
Yeah.
All right. Meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, November 18, 2024, 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at 2nd of New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dede.
Yeah.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Councilman McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Standiel.
Yes.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Steinle.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the board on an item that is not on our agenda for tonight? All right, hearing and seeing none. We have some resolutions to start with. Is there any discussion on the resolutions? Do you have anything to add or?
No, it isn't happening. Edit. Send them.
All right, I would like that we entertain a motion to approve the application number 24:513, Nakul Kasadwala.
Casa Dwala.
Yep. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dede.
Motion to approve application number 24:513, Nakul Kasadwala, 19 and 21 Lincoln Avenue, block 608, lot 12 and 13, minor subdivision for lot merger.
Do we have? Oh, you second. Second. Are you?
It has to be Mr. Math.
Okay, I'll second.
Dede.
Yes.
Math.
Math.
Yes, I said second.
Oh, I, okay.
And the vote.
Oh, yes, sorry. Oh.
Just two to just two.
Yep, all right, and then 169 Lackawanna Avenue, block 136, lot 33, AIN recommendation. Somebody willing to move that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dede.
A motion to approve 169 Lackawanna Avenue, block 136, lot 33, AIN recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dede.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
McGrath.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Standiel.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right, those are the motions. We have a meeting calendar. Has everybody seen the meeting calendar for next year? Is there, are there any conflicts that you know of right now that would be a problem? It's very rare that anybody knows it. Usually the conflicts come from the.
Later.
The public.
Yep, there you go. Do I have a motion approving the 2025 Schedule of Planning Board meetings?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, if you call the roll, please.
Dede.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
McGrath.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Standiel.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right, then we move on to our.
Actually, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I was just looking at this. The organization meeting is listed as being on January 8th.
January 6th.
But, okay, in the, up above the organization, January 8th, that's the title.
Yeah, that would, that would be my error. Thank you for pointing it out. I'll be sure to fix it.
I'm sorry, all right.
Good catch, I say. Just looked at the dates, I didn't look at the header.
And it would be the 6th, not the 8th.
Yep, all right, so we're going to call our agenda tonight. So, application number 24:526, Marata Controls, 20 Waterview Boulevard, block 421, lot 29.1. Preliminary and final major site plan with C variants to construct in addition to the existing loading zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and the public. John Inglesino here, partner with the firm of Inglesino Taylor, located at 600 Precipiny Road in Precipiny. Tonight, I'm here and proud to represent this applicant, Marata Controls, Inc., who is applying for preliminary and final site plan approval for a project located at 20 Waterview Boulevard here in Precipiny. The subject property is identified as block 421, lot 29.1, and the subject property is located within the township's planned office development zoning district. As stated on its website, Marata Controls is a manufacturer and supplier of high-performance motion and flow control products to the aerospace, space, and marine industries. Marata has over 75 years of experience servicing the United States Air Force, as well as decades servicing NASA. In fact, Marata's pressurization and control valves played a critical role in the earliest days of manned spaceflight, from the fuel control valves on the Saturn rocket to propulsion systems for the lunar module engines. Marata takes pride in the fact that every US surface combatant and submarine goes to sea with Marata valves and controls onboard. It's actually pretty cool. Marata assembles its products right here in Precipiny. Indeed, Marata has played a significant role in ensuring the defense of our nation, and Marata appreciated Precipiny's support in amending the POD zone earlier this year to increase the percentage of space that may be used for light assembly and manufacturing of product. Marata looks forward to enhancing its partnership with the township to continue to provide products and service to our nation's defense. The subject property, which serves as Marata's corporate headquarters, contains approximately 55,000 square foot four-story building, which contains light assemblage and aeronautic devices, office space, and research facilities, all of which are permitted in the POD zoning district. All assemblage occurs inside the building, there's no outdoor assemblage, and no more than 40% of the floor area of the subject building is used for light manufacturing and assemblage in accordance with the ordinance. The application before you this evening consists of an addition to the existing loading zone attached to the building to assist with the applicant's operations. The applicant proposes to add two retaining walls, a concrete pad for a chiller at the rear of the building, 807 compliant parking spaces exist on the site, and the applicant proposes to install 16 new EV charging stations. Additional improvements to landscaping and circulation are also proposed. The project will increase the size of the loading zone and enhance the efficiency of loading and unloading trucks on the property. The applicant does have some waivers, three waivers, I think, that we're requesting. One is documentation from a professional demonstrating that no wetlands exist on the site, there are no mapped wetlands on the site, this is a fully developed site. Two, a traffic study, the application here does not result in that increase of 25 or more peak hour trips in any given peak hour, and also from the environmental assessment because the application is only resulting in a slight .13 acre increase in impervious coverage, and all existing trees in the property will remain. The applicant is exempt from the Highlands Regulations, their exemption number four. The applicant is seeking bulk variance relief for a few things, for a variance for minimum size loading zone, variance for maximum impervious coverage, and we're also seeking bulk variance relief for some existing non-conformities that obviously exist on the property today. One with regard to minimum tract area, second with regard to maximum floor area ratio, and I guess those are the two. Mr. Chairman, we have four witnesses. We have Mr. Tom Marata, who's the applicant's principal CEO, who provides some additional testimony with regard to what Marata does. We have Brad Bowler of Bowler Engineering, who's a project civil engineer. We have William of Kimberly, of Kimberly Newman, who's the project architect, and last is Alex McLean of John McDonough's firm, who will provide planning testimony. We have some reports from the board, just want to make sure that we have those squared away. We have an ARH report dated 10, it looks like, if I can read my writing, 10/13 or 10/2324, and 11/124. We have a GPI report dated 10/1824, a Precipiny SOWA utility report dated 10/124, an inter-office memo from a tax assessor dated 9/2324, and Precipiny Fire District 6 report dated 9/2724. That's what I have.
Ms. Winter, has he summarized the waivers?
Yeah, he summarized the waivers. We don't have any objection, given the minimal increase in impervious coverage.
Do I have a motion approving the waivers listed in the ARH report of?
November 1st.
November 1st.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you like to bring up Mr. Marata?
If you'd please raise your hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Thomas Marata, 111 Melrose Road, Mountain Lakes, New Jersey, 07046.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Marata, I tried to summarize a little bit about what your company does, but I think it would be better if the board heard from you in terms of some of the great things that your company is doing right here in Precipiny.
Thank you, yeah, I'm pleased to share all the detail that I have in a few minutes. One minor correction, I'm not the CEO, so you don't have to let my brother know, I'm vice president of Strategic Initiatives, and.
Details, details.
Close, close. So, really happy to share what we're doing with you. We came to Precipiny as we outgrew our original location in Montville, that was around three years ago, so I'm happy to say we found another home. We've been located in Montville for 79 years. We are a family-owned private company, and tend to stay that way. We are predominantly involved in defense and aerospace, and we service three major segments that we break our business into, marine, as John mentioned, space, and power and actuation systems, which is our newest grouping of products. So, power and actuation systems is very fast growth for us, this is what we've been working on for 15 years, it sounds like a long time, but in our overall history, it's the baby. And so, in Precipiny, we found a great location, which had a lot of extra space to grow into. We've anticipated using up the square footage that we had, we started with 50,000 square feet on lease for five years, and we found a great partner with Sam Morial and Ross Chomack of Vision, and as we were looking to expand more, we talked about purchasing the property, which we did. So, we have plenty of space for expansion, and it's working out really well. So, what we'd like to do is we're moving all of the power and actuation systems group over, that's 80-plus people in the first year, once construction's done, and to do that, we need some changes, which includes the loading dock and some other equipment. Our intention is to be a great neighbor, so we've been working with the team, there's going to be really no impact otherwise than what you would have with normal equipment, such as HVAC generator, if that happens to run occasionally. So, operations will be fairly minimal, we're not a logistics operation, we see a lot of traffic coming from our neighbor, Whole Foods, and trucks and deliveries, probably a couple deliveries in the morning, a couple in the afternoon at most, but we can't control the size of the trucks that enter, so we have to equip a loading dock to handle the largest trucks.
Any questions by members of the board? Thank you, council.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this time, thank you, Mr. Marata, I'd like to call Brad Bowler, and just one more comment before Mr. Bowler comes up. I think this is a really good story for Precipiny, where you had a building over there at 20 Waterview that had some really restrictive zoning, and without the cooperation of the township, working in partnership with Marata, that zoning would have forced them to go find the building someplace else, and 20 Waterview would not be housing this great company, instead, 20 Waterview would have come under pressure for some other type of development that may not have been commercial or to the township's liking, but because the township council and the mayor worked with this property owner, you now have a property that has repurposed itself for a commercial owner-operator, who is not only providing a good rateable for the township, but also providing a useful service and product for these important industries for the country. So, kudos to Precipiny for working with them on that.
Yeah, thank you, the support's been amazing, and I think everyone comments that our parking lot is the most full, so I think that speaks volumes right there.
All right, Mr. Bowler.
Wait just one moment, I forgot something. Is there any member of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none, now you may move forward.
All right.
If you'd please raise your hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Bradford Bowler, BOHLER, 30 Independence Boulevard in Warren, New Jersey.
And Mr. Bowler, you've testified before this board numerous times in the past, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And your license is still valid?
It's correct, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if you want, I can go through the, boy, dear Mr. Bowler, but I think he's well-known to the board as a civil engineer, and we'd ask for you to accept him as an expert in that area.
Is there anybody who has any questions on the expertise of this witness? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bowler, can you please describe the civil engineering aspects of this project for the board?
Sure, so my first exhibit will be an aerial, I did hand out three exhibits, which I'll use tonight for presentation purposes, and the first exhibit is up on the board right now, it's an aerial exhibit, north is to the top of the page, I'll mark that A1 when I get up in a second. The address of the property is shown in yellow, so that's in the center of the property. Waterview Boulevard is to the bottom of the page, north is to the top, there's a residential community up to the north, the Whole Foods retail shopping centers to the west, number of office buildings are to the south, and then another office building to the east, and further along is a TD Bank at the corner of that area. Overall, this is in a POD district, it's approximately, I'm sorry, it's 93 acres. We are on the northwest corner of the POD, the remaining portion is to the south and to the east of the property. The current site does house a four-story office building, it's about 55,000 square feet, that's shown, it's almost like a white-yellow in the middle of this exhibit. The rear of the property does have approximately a 160 to 200-foot wooded area that's acting as a buffer within that area, and access to the site is through two driveways, one to the east of the building, and one, oh, sorry, the west of the building and one to the east of the building for access. I will just hit on the four existing non-conformities that we have for this facility. One is the tract size, so the POD requires that 132 acres is part of the tract size. We have currently 93.27 acres, we're not changing that, it's just the existing condition as it stands. The floor area ratio for the facility is required to be 0.226, where we have 0.315, again, no changes to the facility floor area ratio, so that's going to stay the same. This building height is 388.7 feet above sea level, so it's not 388 feet tall, where 375 feet's required. So, again, existing condition for the building itself, that's not changing, we're not changing the height of the building.
What about impervious coverage?
I'm going to get to that in a second, I'm just going through the existing conditions, and the last one is there's a buffer requirement, again, the back of the property requires 200 feet to the residential, existing condition, we are not touching that proposal. Those are the four that are existing that we're just asking for documentation on, and I'm going to go through the two under the proposal in a second. So, this is an overall site plan, marked as A2, it's sheet 301 colorized, and I'll just remain on this briefly before we go into the next exhibit, which will show more detail. Essentially, our site is going to maintain the current circulation configuration access-wise, the driveways are going to stay the same along the southern portion of the property, the south is to the bottom, same configuration as last time. Parking lot around the outside of the building will generally remain the same, there is a loop road that goes closer to the building, and it hits the west, north, and east sides of the building. That access will go from two-way to a one-way circulation and not go clockwise. So, you enter in off the western driveway, and then on the inner loop road, you'll go one-way direction. Parking along the east, I'm sorry, the west and the north side will remain unchanged, so the access will just go one direction, and then there'll be a proposed loading dock on the east side of the building, and that's the way the trucks will also circulate. So, I'll show that in the close-up version in a second, but I want to make sure I explain to the board the access and how that change is happening. As part of this proposal, there is about a 5,700 square foot addition to impervious coverage, about half of that, or a little bit more, is based on the loading area changes, and then there's a couple other pads that are being proposed for mechanical equipment, a cooling tower, and again, I'll show that in the next exhibit. So, let me jump to that one, let me work that A3. So, A3 is sheet 302 colorized for our purposes, north is to the top of the page, similar to the other two exhibits. The reason I'm using this is because this really focuses on the proposal that we're doing for this facility. To the east side of the building, there's a loading dock that's being proposed, it's a non-enclosed covered loading dock that extends outside of the building. The loop road I mentioned before, with the way the trucks come in, will be to the left side of this plan, they'll circle around the top of the plan, and then they'll enter into the loading dock by passing it and backing in that area. So, that's one loading space that we're proposing, there's also another loading space to the bottom left-hand corner of that, it's an opened asphalt area, and that's going to be used for FedEx trucks, Amazon, UPS, box trucks, similar to what you'd see on the other side of the building, so that would propose three part loading spaces. In the variance for this, or for the loading space that was requested, the smaller loading space is required to be two times as long as the biggest vehicle that's going to be fit within the facility, and we are five feet short of that requirement in that area. Again, these are box trucks, if a box truck needed to park in this area, they could simply pull past the loading space by five feet and back into the area, maneuverability is there, we've checked that, as well as the maneuverability of the largest truck on the road, and both of the facilities work, so we are requesting a variance for the dimension of the parking spaces. I'm sorry, the loading spaces. With regards to the parking, we do have a proposal for 807 parking spaces, that's down nine spaces, we are losing nine spaces to install the loading area. This is compliant with the code, so there are no concerns with variance or parking, and to make of the differential, we do propose 16 EV parking spaces, which by state law do allow for credit to be provided, so theoretically, we aren't losing any parking spaces by the EV code, it's a physical loss that's on the plan. After we, I'm sorry, one more thing I want to hit, we also are proposing a sidewalk, ADA-compliant sidewalk from the Whole Foods sidewalk, it terminates at the property to the west, up through into our site, so that's an ADA-compliant route that goes into the property. After all the improvements are proposed and completed, we do have, again, a 5,700 square foot impervious coverage increase, and that does increase the impervious coverage variance that was currently existing by .13% in the tracts, so not just the property, but the tract itself. Very de minimis increase in general, mainly for the pads that are the northwest corner and the north portion of the building for mechanical equipment, and then the loading area that's just to the west, I'm sorry, the east of the building. We do have landscaping proposed on the site, so we remove eight trees by installing the sidewalk and doing the pad areas to the northeast and the loading spaces. We are proposing to install eight new deciduous trees to replace those trees. We also have a number of evergreen trees that are proposing for screening along the east side where the loading space is, as well as a chiller area to the northeast of the building, so another 30 or so evergreen trees in that area, so not part of the replacement, but for screening purposes in that location. The last thing I'll hit on is stormwater, and then I'll hit lighting as well, so from a stormwater perspective, we're not a major development by state code, we do trigger a stormwater review by the town ordinance, and in working with the engineer on this application, we've agreed to install a drywall as part of our approvals that will be in accordance with the town code, so we'll meet that criteria in that aspect. And finally, from a lighting perspective, we do have a small lighting plan that was for the area of disturbance only, mainly bollards, but there are a few lights that are on the building on the east side of the building that we're proposing. They are shown as a floodlight that's tilted up, and we'll agree to revise that lighting, so it's a dark sky compliant light for this application, we'll work with the engineer to get that written off and approved by him. The last thing I wanted to confirm is there's no new light signage on the application, so we don't have a signage package for you tonight, because we're not proposing any new signage for the facility. With regards to the review letter, I hit the two things that we were asked to provide testimony on, but from an engineering perspective and an engineering review letter, we can comply with everything else that's in that letter as well, and that's all I have for my direct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Mr. Canziano, do you have any?
No, we touched on the lighting, that was one of my comments, that it was, we wanted that type of fixture revised. Soil movement, did you see our comment, this is to your benefit, and did you happen to revise your application for soil movement?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't hit that, I apologize. We did file a soil movement application, 450 yards of cut, of soil cutting will be coming off the site for the improvements.
Okay. And just, obviously, you're going to, what is your haul roof going to be?
Waterview, I would assume the 287, maybe to 46.
And what's the yardage of net?
450 yards export.
You touched on parking already, I noticed there was a note from Morris County SCD with your swale, can you give a little testimony on what you're doing with that swale on the property?
Sure, in light green, there's two swales that are in the back of the building, if anyone from the board's been to this site, the back of the building's elevated slightly, so there's a, the grade on the bottom is down further, there's currently two swales currently two swales that exist now, they're not functioning appropriately, so we're going to reconstruct those swales along those areas, and we'll work with the SCD to provide proper stabilization of those swales, some sort of matting or something like that in those areas.
And you mentioned you're switching circulation from two-way circulation to single, what's the rationale, or how are you going to control that from your employee standpoint?
Sure, as an employee, you come into the office building, you'd see it daily, we'd have striping and signage on-site, rationale is that it allows for a truck to circulate around the facility and go in one direction without overlapping a center line of the parking space.
And visitors are coming on the south side of the building or the north side of the building?
I would assume visitors are coming on the south side of the building, but there's probably, I mean, I think I was there tonight, and there's some spaces there on the north side as well.
I just wanted to get a background, thank you.
Members of the board have questions on this testimony at this time?
Maybe just one.
Okay.
You're adding a drywall, does this site already have, like, stormwater management? And I'm sure it's got to, right?
From what I saw on the survey and on-site, there's no basin or underground basin. It was likely built before regulations came in place.
Okay.
Other members of the board have questions on this testimony? Other members of the public who have questions on this testimony at this time?
I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, planner first.
The retaining wall, there's going to be a fence on top of it?
Yes.
What's the total height?
The wall is.
Which is a variance because it needs to be six or under.
If we set back the fence a certain distance, does that change the variance?
I would say, yeah.
Yeah.
That's not a variance.
It's not a variance if it's on top of the wall then.
Okay. I mean, we could certainly shift it back a couple of feet if that's a concern of the board. It's not a problem.
That's fine.
Any other members of the board or professionals?
Chairman, yep. So real quick, the EV parking spaces, I do see that one of them is ADA compliant.
Yes.
Which is great, but I feel like that's too far from the entrances. So somebody who's in need for that type of parking spot, it would be too far for them. So I would suggest if there's a possibility, I do see three of them very close to the entrance. And if you could make one of those, you know, maybe, again, a model suggestion. I am a user of ADA parking space, so I know a little far is actually too far for somebody who actually needs it.
We'll be looking at that.
Yep. So I understand you check all the boxes, you know, you meet all the requirements, but again, it's more of a recommendation, yeah?
Other members of the board, professionals, now public. There's a question out here. If you could please come forward, identify yourself and speak into the microphone, please.
I'm a Swain, I lived in Old Manor, I live at 19983.
I'm sorry, could you just state your names?
I think you're on the wrong application. Don't play with that because you're going to shut it off, but you're speaking about Old Manor, correct? You're on the wrong application.
Wrong application. Wait for the next application.
This is Marotta, which is right across the street here.
That'll be up in a couple minutes.
Any other members of the public have questions on this application, on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Mr. William Kimmerly of Kimmerly Newman, who is the project architect.
If you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
William Kimmerly, K-I-M-M-E-R-L-E, 502 Madison Street, apartment 502 in Hoboken, Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Kimmerly, if you would, just give the board a little bit of your information regarding your professional backgrounds, education, licenses that you possess, and work experience.
I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, as well as several other states, west coasts, and across, and our firm is active locally as well as nationally. Personally, I've been with our firm since 2011. We are active throughout the tri-state and in particular in the township of Persippany, throughout Morris County. I'm a graduate of Washington University in St. Louis and I received my professional degree in Rhode Island School of Design.
And you've testified before boards in New Jersey and have been accepted as an expert in the area of architecture, correct?
I have, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Any questions on the qualifications of the expert? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kimmerly, if you would, please provide the architectural aspects of the application for the board.
Okay. So as part of the improvements that were discussed by Mr. Bowler, our firm has prepared proposed elevations and sections, which I'll pull up in one second, that show a very modest improvement to the building, which is really about covering the loading dock that has been proposed. This is an all-weather structure, it's not something that is enclosed fully, it is open to the south. I'll pull up the other, does this work?
Yep. If you could mark that, this will be A4, just describe it.
This is a single, the building itself is 1988 vintage. It underwent a significant cosmetic rehabilitation in the 2018, 2019.
I'm not sure that your microphone's on.
It's on.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Today, there's a four-story structure that was constructed in 1988. In the 2018 to 2019 period, it was, it underwent a significant cosmetic renovation and a facelift under ownership at that time. That introduced a new cosmetic scheme to the building that we'll be marrying into, and I'll speak to briefly. What's being proposed today is a structure of approximately 12 feet in height, approximately 31 feet in width, and 20 feet in depth. That is a two-sided structure. Existing building wall will receive a new overhead door, as well as a man door, facilitates access from this new loading dock. The loading dock will be equipped with a leveler, with four feet down to what's been testified to by Bowler Engineering, which is really the truck path. The loading dock itself will have a rear wall at the north and a right wall at the easterly elevation. That 2018 renovation changed the appearance of this building to essentially a white finish with what we believe are fairly attractive silver metallic accents at the recesses along this facade. We'll be continuing that scheme with the same material, applied EFS, at the roof line of this new short structure, again, 12 foot three, and standing steam metal panel in the same metallic finish on both the east and the north walls. It's not a lot to this, that's really the totality of what's being suggested architecturally. I do have a couple other exhibits to help explain some of this, just to give orientation. So this is an aerial view, looking from the southeast corner of the property. The easterly side is where all of the improvements are being proposed.
That'll be exhibit A5.
A5, okay. The modifications that the civil engineer testified to are all occurring at this easterly exposure. Our new structure will be approximately in this location and will be marrying visually to everything that exists today on the site. One item that the civil engineer spoke to, and I'll be able to testify to, is that there is a sunken area to the rear of the building. That is, the first floor at grade is exposed at the full rear of the building. That sunken area will be a new home for mechanical equipment that's associated with Marotta Controls' operations, specifically thermal chambers for testing of their devices prior to shipment. Those thermal chambers, one additional exhibit?
This one will be exhibit A6.
Will be connected to three chillers that will be located in that recessed portion of the lot, on new pads shown on the engineering set. Those three chillers do generate noise. We've worked through calculations, which are provided here for yourselves and for the public, that approximately 62 decibels per unit, we know this is a concern for the board's consultants, 62 decibels collectively at three units will generate just shy of 65 decibels from those three units. Attenuated to the property line, a series of calculations that are a firm work-through, at approximately 410 feet distance to the rear lot line, that's attenuated down to approximately 42 decibels. That itself is compliant with both daytime and nighttime ordinances applicable for noise generation. 42 decibels, just for, as a point of reference, is approximately the noise generated by a domestic refrigerator. So at the property line, those three chillers will only be generating that much noise. That is not, it's also not discounted for the change in elevation. None of that has been taken into account, so there will be further noise attenuation associated with the grade that those are sunken into, the rear tree line, and that rear grade that goes up in elevation.
Okay. Anything further?
No, that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back to you.
Could you mark them?
Yeah, did you physically mark the? So A4, A5, A6.
Okay, thank you.
Does the board have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public who have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, we'll call Mr. Alex McLean of John McDonough Associates.
If you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Yes, my name is Alexander McLean, last name is M-C-C-L-E-A-N. My address is 137 Heckel Street, Belleville, New Jersey.
And so, Mr. McLean, if you could provide the board with your professional and educational background and list any licenses that you have.
Sure. Yes, I hold a master's degree in city regional planning from Rutgers University, nationally certified by the AICP, licensed by the State Board of Professional Planners, and I've testified before boards throughout the state.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Chairman?
Any questions on the qualifications of the witness? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Can you please identify the variances that are triggered by this application and provide testimony with respect to the proofs for the board to grant those merits?
Sure. So we are essentially talking about considering the size of the lot, C2 variances for the lot area minimum, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, for the tract maximum impervious surface coverage and minimum loading size requirements, and the pre-existing non-conforming conditions that were identified in the planner's And with that, I will just get into my testimony here. So we're talking about, as mentioned before, a single tax lot, lot 29.01 on block 421, measuring 732,940 square feet, and located on the north side of the Waterview Boulevard, between Route 202 to the east and US Route 46 to the west and the south. As the architect indicated, the property's been improved with the four-story building that was constructed in 1988. And for the purposes of just orientating the board even further for the surrounding land uses, I have exhibits to include here.
Is it just a packet?
Yeah, just aerial images.
All right, so we'll make that A7.
And that was prepared by your office?
Yeah, yeah. All right, so while you guys are, I guess, passing that out, I'll just start going over the surrounding land uses. So to the west of the site, as noted before, we have the shopping center. It's currently occupied by the Whole Foods Market, the Home Sense, Alta, DSW, and Orange Theory, and among some other retail uses. And to the east, you've got the three-story office building at 10 Waterview Boulevard. To the south, you have an office building at 45 Waterview Boulevard, currently occupied by the Life Science Research Company DSM for Minak, and a three-story office building located at 35 Waterview Boulevard, occupied by Sun Chemical. And to the north, you have the Single Fanning Residential District, identified earlier by your professionals. For, as noted before, we're looking to develop, applicant seeking to develop, in addition to the existing loading dock on the eastern wing of the building, make some landscaping improvements, install a retaining wall, you have the 16 EV parking spaces and the chillers. Property's located in the town's POD, Planned Office Development District. As far as conformance with the existing zoning district, we noted that there are several pre-existing non-conforming conditions, such as the minimum tract area, max FAR, maximum height, and the, one of the minimum loading requirement areas. But the site, that, you know, largely conforms with the zoning ordinance requirements for lot area, minimum yard depth, maximum buffer requirement, the loading requirements, minimum parking stall size, minimum number of parking stalls, and minimum aisle width. And as noted before, we are looking for the C2 relief for those two requirements regarding maximum impervious coverage and minimum lot size requirements, among the other waivers. So as far as the C2 variance relief, as the planner noted in their report, the positive criteria requires the applicant to demonstrate that the benefits of the deviation substantially outweigh any detriment. It's clear that the applicant's proposed project's intended to improve operations on the site and result in the minimus deviation in the impervious coverage of 6%, while the building is already 3.08% below the building coverage limit of 15.5%. And the length of the SU-30 loading area is only, is the only dimension of the loading size requirement that is being met, which is 5% of, five feet below the 60-foot requirement. With respect to the negative criteria, the proposed relief would not result in substantial detriment, substantial impairment to the public good, nor substantial impairment to the intended purpose of the zone plan or ordinance, considering the property's located in a dedicated commercial park and is heavily buffered from other commercial buildings and the more sensitive residential uses to the north, I can't see how the requested relief would result in any impact to the surrounding neighborhood. Furthermore, considering the other site improvements in addition to the loading dock, I believe that the requested relief would advance multiple purposes of the MOUL, including the general welfare, considering the economic impact that the anticipated relief would have on the applicant's ability to improve operations on the property. Purpose G, for sufficient space and the appropriate locations for commercial industrial uses. Purpose H, for encouraging the location and design of transportation routes that promote the free flow of traffic and discouraging congestion. Purpose I, for promoting the desirable visual environment, since it would be advancing the planned landscaping improvements. And Purpose N, for the promotion of the utilization of renewable energy resources with the inclusion of the 16 EV parking stalls. The requested relief would also advance the business zoning goal of the township's 2020 master plan, which calls for, quote, "a review of permitted uses, area, and bulk requirements, parking requirements, and other zoning provisions to remove potential barriers to entrepreneurs, new businesses, new business types, and experiential retail." And with that, I believe that the criteria for relief has been met and that approval is warranted.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Winter, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Members of the board have any questions on this testimony at this time? Any members of the public have questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really want to thank the board for its time and attention to the application. Just come up by saying thank you, it's obviously fresh in your mind and we respectfully hope that the board will approve it.
Are there any members of the public who have any questions or any comments on this application at this time? This is your only chance. Hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Somebody willing to make a motion or? Somebody willing to make a motion on this application?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve application number 24:526, Marotta Controls, INC 20 Waterview Boulevard, block 421, dot 29 dot 01, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance to construct addition to the existing loading zone.
Do we have any conditions?
Yes. It was discussed that the applicant will install a drywall and comply with the town code requirements, will adjust the lighting plan to meet dark sky requirements, and work with the board engineer to confirm same. with the board engineer to confirm same, comply with the board engineer's review letter and comments, shift the fence back from the top of the retaining wall, and will look into moving the EVSC ADA spaces closer to the entrance of the building.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. DiPiero. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich?
Yes.
DiPiero?
Yes.
Grass?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Dandiel?
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
This leads us next, to the next item on our agenda, which is application number 24: 510 Noel Manor Associates, North Beverick Road, Block 497, Lot 2, minor site plan with C variance for a maintenance yard. Counselor?
Good evening. Mark Rothberg from the Wilk Law Firm, 820 Morris Turnpike, Short Hills, New Jersey, representing Noel Manor Associates. We're here tonight with regard to our application for a minor site plan with one C variance for the continued use of our client's property as a maintenance yard, servicing the residential apartment development with over 1,100 units that they've been operating as a service yard, that property, for the past 40 years. With me this evening is Michael Dipple, professional engineer with L2A Land Design LLC, as our one witness. The board would like to watch your follow-up on Mr. Dipple as a witness.
Do you have any waivers first?
We don't have any waivers. We have a number of items that are non-applicable, but we just would like some testimony that nothing is changing regards to the rest of the site.
So, if you please raise your hand, do you swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Sure. It's Michael Dipple, D.I.P.P.L.E. I am employed by L2A Land Design LLC. Our address is 66 Grand Avenue in Englewood, New Jersey.
And have you ever testified before?
I have. I have. I think it's been a little while, but I was here, I believe, last for New Jersey Manufacturers Insurance on Littleton Road. They did a walking path. I think that was my last application. You may have seen my business partner here recently on some other applications, but personally, I've missed parshippany a little bit in the last few years. I could continue. I have a bachelor in civil engineering from Rutgers University. I've been doing this for 33 years. I started L2A in 2006. My license is in good standing, and I was manager of this project for Noel Garden.
All right, any other questions by members of the board on the qualifications of the witness? Hearing and seeing none, Counselor?
We would respectfully request that he be accepted as our expert.
We just.
Thank you. So, I have on the board the set of plans that I, that we submitted as part of the application. Sheet CO1 is entitled "Existing Conditions and Demolition Plan." CO2 is entitled "Site Plan," and I think the copy that I have, the third page, is misnumbered. There should be a CO3, which is just the property owner's license. It was quite extensive, and we just dropped it on to another page. I'm going to move to another exhibit here.
I'm sorry. That exhibit, what is the most recent revision date? I only have August 6.
This is October 23, 2020. Oh, sorry, that was not resubmitted. August 6, 2024.
That's the most recent revision for that one?
Yes. I think there was a chance of a resubmission. I might have brought, so we'll go with August 6.
Okay.
Because I think my testimonial showed that it almost doesn't matter, but. I'm going to go to an exhibit, let me get this the right way, A1, and I'll mark it as such with today's date. So, we're going to mark this A1, and today is 11/18/24, and it is an aerial photograph taken from Google Earth. The imagery date appears as October 8, 2024, so it's very, very recent. And you can see the Noel Garden residential complex here. It's this triangular piece of property, which is about 43 acres, and subject of the application. And I brought this so you could see exactly where we're referring to. And if you look here on the north end, so north is up on this image, if you look here at the north end, a little bit west, you can see this little brown area, and that is the maintenance area. That is the service area that we're referring to on the complex. So, just to give an idea, North Beverick is here on the right side of the page. That kind of generally runs in the north-south direction, all the way down to Route 46, and continues northward. And then, you have Noel Road, which comes across the top of the page in the east-west direction, and the golf course beyond. So, that's just to give an idea of where that's located. So, the existing conditions, I guess, it doesn't matter what version I have, but existing conditions is shown on the first page. And there's a parking area just immediately to the west of it, and there's a gate. And inside that area, it's really exactly, as I mentioned, it's just a maintenance area for the 1,108 residential units that are here. So, on the north end, where I have this shaded area here, they're generally using that as a masonry area. So, they have employed or contracted with an outside mason who comes in and does small concrete work. So, there's a lot of curb that gets damaged, there's a lot of other little concrete work, so he keeps brick there, he keeps cinder block, he keeps a lot of Belgian block. When I was there first in May of this year, there was bags of cement that he was there, there was a mixer, and that generally takes place, and he's permitted to use this north end over here. So, there isn't really a lot of order to it. He's just using, he's got planks there, he has to form things up, so he has some wood there and some other things, and he generally just uses that as a work area in order to make the repairs that are necessary. To the south, there are a number of dumpsters. There was another, there's some material stockpiles, different materials that are being used at the site. Again, the day that I was there in May, there was a large pile of Belgian block that had moved over here to the southern end. There are a few other dumpsters that were strewn. Speaking to the property manager, some of the dumpsters had become damaged, and they were just waiting to be picked up. So, those especially were the two that were over on the east side of the maintenance area. So, in speaking with the maintenance officer there, he had mentioned that we're trying to get those out of there because they became damaged and they were leaking, and we don't want them. So, throughout the site, there are a few dumpsters that are around for residents to use, and you can see at the bottom of the page, at the bottom of this maintenance area, there are a row of dumpsters that are currently being used by the residents. So, that's really how it works. There's one gate that accesses it, there's a fence around all sides. I believe the six-foot fence is subject, or the reason for the variance, because it's of a height that is not permitted in the front yard, but that exists there now. Chain link fence here, there's back-to-back wooded fences from the resident on Lot 8, and the subject lot, they have back-to-back stockade fences along the east side of the property, and then there's a chain link fence along the southern end of the property. So, currently, it's a lot of, there's some gravel, there's some dirt areas, there are some areas where you could see that work had been done and things had been moved around, but, and then it's kind of surrounded by kind of just some overgrowth and some trees, some tall, mature trees on all sides of the yard. So, that's really what you would see out there. It's a little bit higher, maybe, looking at the math here, the topo, maybe 6 feet higher at most between Noel Road and the level of the area, and then maybe 3 feet higher, 4 feet higher, let's say, to the neighbor to the east. So, it sits up a little bit in the northeast corner, and then as you come down, the grade changes, the grade rises as you go a little bit to the south, and then it kind of meets grade at that point. And I guess, under current conditions, the applicant would like to keep it as is, they would like to continue to use it as a maintenance facility for Noel Gardens. I think there were a few things in the letters that requested, you know, parking count and things like that. I believe your planner had mentioned there are per-year ordinance. I believe it requires two parking spaces per unit. So, I think with the 1,108, we have 2,216 parking spaces required. There are only 1,685 spaces, and that is a, that is a best we can do kind of count on the spaces. We took a look at aerials, we drove around, we did the best we could. There's some areas that are a little bit questionable as to where the spaces may have been, and some aren't really striped that well. So, we did the best to estimate about 1,685 spaces. Right now, there are a number of spaces that really don't function as parking spaces right in front of the gate. It's, the gate is generally open, it's a very wide gate, and the spaces are not being used. I pulled into this area tonight just to take another look at it. I hadn't been here since earlier this summer. And again, there were, all the car, all the spaces were taken in the lot, except in front of that gate, it's really wide open, and it would remain that way. So, we're not really losing spaces by this, we're not making any real change. I think three of the spaces are really not being used at all because of the open gate.
If I could just ask, during the winter, you're going to have snow removal equipment that is stored there during the winter, as well as salt?
Yes.
That will service the 1,100 residential units for that complex?
Correct. There are seasonal things, and if you go there, I failed to mention some of these. There is some equipment that was there, we sent some photographs in. I believe your engineer, your planner, mentioned what they witnessed at the facility. There is some large equipment that does arrive there, there is snow removing equipment. Of course, as the season changes, they have to gear up for that, so you will see some of that material on-site. That, of course, gets used up, the equipment is no longer needed there, that leaves the site. Perhaps sometimes when a bigger concrete job is there, there might be other equipment there that is used for the concrete. There is an indication that there were some appliances there. I spoke to the property manager earlier tonight about that. Those are just staged there, maybe for a day at the longest, just until someone can pick them up. With 1,100 units, refrigerators go bad, other appliances go bad, and they need a place to put them, they just stage them there until someone can come and pick them all up. But really, it's not. I was there twice in May, and I did not see any appliances whatsoever the days that I was there, but I do see photographs now in the letters that show some appliances are currently, were there at that time, so.
Good question. Sure. Is the property still, like, is the maintenance area still, like, look like this? I mean, it looks like a mess.
It's not, it's not an orderly place. I think the application, we would try to make it more orderly. There were, like I said, there were some dumpsters that had been there that they were trying to get rid of. They're going to make an effort to get rid of the dumpsters. It is kind of, you know, it's a little overgrown on the other side of the fence. The masonry area that I described in the beginning, you know, he's working there constantly, he's always kind of there working. That can be made a little more orderly, but it is active. So, we are proposing, you know, maybe just to straighten it up, clean it up, organize it, get rid of the dumpsters, get rid of any unnecessary machinery, and try to, you know, do a better job cleaning it and maintaining it and keeping it more orderly.
Actually, Mr. Canjiano's memo gets very much to this. I'd actually like to have him ask his questions based on his memo at this point.
Yeah, first off, it's a very large area. What is the size?
It's, I agree. It's about a half an acre, it's about 100 feet wide by 200 feet roughly. It's not a perfect rectangle, but it's about, between fences, the fence that's just on the east side of the parking spaces, over to the property line where there's the wooden fence, is about 100 feet, and it's 200 feet from the chain link fence, down to this angled fence here, so roughly 100 by 200.
And this is the R5 zone, right?
This is in the R5, I failed to mention, we are in the R5 zone, this is.
And all areas in the R5 zone not used for parking, not used for buildings, not used for roadways, are supposed to be landscaped?
Okay.
This is a big half-acre area that's not landscaped.
Understood.
And from our site visit, as well as these photos, it's a huge tract of maintenance area that I think lends itself for becoming a mess.
I believe when it was brought to our engineer and our client's attention, we did agree to have certain number of dumpsters, and my client was willing to allocate stalls to be storing material, so it's not just haphazard.
Testimony be provided on what you're proposing? I mean, you went over the existing conditions.
So, we've talked since, we were deemed complete, we brought the application, we were talking since and what could be done. We can organize the dumpsters, we can put in, I believe there was a recommendation for a concrete pad, we can put a concrete pad down for the dumpsters, make sure that things move off the site if they're no longer needed. But I should say, it does seem like a large area, but there is movement of things that come in and out. So, if you look at the, we tried to depict, you know, that northern area where the masonry is going on, and that generally is correct. And, I mean, he may, you know, bring some of his stone or his brick beyond that area, but that's pretty significant. And then, when you have these material stockpiles, you have to remember that machines have to come in and get that, and turn around and move it back out. So, although it seems like a, like a large area, it's bound to the south by asphalt and another fence, so beyond that, I don't know what else that would be the use for. But we were proposing to perhaps put dumpsters in, onto a pad, and then, you know, things could be cleaned and straightened. I think we're, I think we're willing to.
I had another question. What is the purpose of the dumpsters?
There are dumpsters throughout the site. There, well, we'd have to.
Well, in other words, there are dumpsters for each, for each building has their own garbage dumpsters for tenants, but if you're going to renovate apartments, you look at, apartments, you look at, there are 1,100 apartments there, and this maintenance yard is a very small portion. So if you're going to remove or renovate apartments which turn over because it is an old apartment complex over 40 years, when you're renovating apartments, then you, you need to remove belongings. You can't put the storage, you know, the, the materials from the apartment in the dumpsters, you know, that's designated for residents to use their, you know, to use the garbage. They need a place to actually move and have the, the materials picked up when you're renovating apartments. So that little lot compared to the whole apartment complex is the only open space that is there to renovate and improve. And, you know, not only the, I think our engineer mentioned refrigerators, but, but countertops, you know, they can't just be put in the dumpsters that residents use in their designated area. They need to be moved and stored so they could be physically picked up by machinery.
So these are more, I'm sorry, these are more of the larger containers, not the dumpsters. So when I'm using the word dumpster, I'm referring to the ones that are also out on the site that the residents come and put their trash into.
Well, my question was, what are the dumpsters on this half-acre, 100 by 200 maintenance area? What are the purposes of those dumpsters?
When we were there, there were four there, and they were damaged dumpsters. That had been damaged. They had moved them. They had brought new dumpsters in so that, so that they could, you know, still continue to serve the residents. So here's a grouping of six dumpsters in a trash area that serve this general area of residents. So.
So residents go into this maintenance area?
No, not at all. They, they use dumpsters that are throughout the site. The, the physical dumpster itself, the, the big green box, when, when I was there, there were four there. We had, we had noticed there were four, and speaking to the maintenance supervisor, he said those were damaged. They just, over time, they, they got damaged, they rusted out, whatever happened to them, and they had been put there. And he had said, we need to get those out of there. So he's willing to take those off. So we're showing those dumpsters to be removed. So we would take those off the site. So those dumpsters wouldn't be there because they're really not serving any purpose other than just sitting there. I think what we were talking about in terms of the renovating the apartments goes into the larger containers, the big 20-yard containers. I think they're 20 yards, but those are the larger ones that you see at work sites. So I agree that, you know, when you renovate these apartments, when you do major work, this is where it goes. It goes into there. It doesn't go into the residential dumpsters that people use for recycling and, and regular trash.
How many of those are being proposed by the applicant to remain?
So three with a space for a fourth one, in case there was a fourth one that was needed.
And I believe we spoke, we would be willing to put in the concrete.
Yes.
Areas as well for.
How long has this been here like this?
It's over 40 years since the apartment.
No, 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 this, this maintenance yard.
Over 40 years. They've been using that, yes. We, I brought with me our apartment, the property manager, he's been here for 25 years. But it's been, that's the maintenance yard for that development. If you look at the entire triangle with A1, the Google map, that is the only area, and that's been continuously used for 40 years, as the maintenance yard for the machinery that comes in on, during the winter when, when stoops need concrete work. This is where the salt and the concrete is stored with the machinery to service that very large apartment complex. So while on a plan, you know, it may seem large, the maintenance yard compared to the comp, compared to the entire complex of over 1,100 units that it services, it's a very small area to service that large apartment complex.
I, I know exactly where the yard is. It's just you could see, like, the, the overflow of what's going on from.
Right. And we're willing to, you know, reasonably have it cleaned, cleaned up.
Mr. Canjiano?
Yeah. I just have a hard time with, with, you know, visiting this site. It looks, you know, it's, it looks like the pictures. It's, it's a massive site that has, that lends itself to becoming messy again. And I, I just don't, I'm wrestling with the uses. I mean, for example, the masonry yard. I'm not, maybe Christine, you can chime in, but I don't know that storage of construction material and contractors' construction material is even an approved use in, in this, this property. And it's a large area. That, that could be 100 by 100 area. Again, this is a, these are big, big areas. Further, I see you have stockpiles of, on your existing condition plan of materials along the property line. It just seems like you could really reduce, make this an orderly proposed site plan.
Understood.
And reduce the square footage of what you're doing. And I think it would lend itself to removing broken equipment that's in disrepair. You won't have the area to store to remove the damaged and rotting dumpsters. You know, you won't have the, the room to store them. I see that there's a great opportunity to have a buffer area, vegetated buffer between the adjoining properties and this use. I just, I didn't, I was kind of confused by the application, and I don't hear a lot of testimony on, on what, on what's going to be proposed. That's, that's my general.
That would be my general agreement, you know, like, see where exactly all this that's proposed to be stored is actually going to be stored. Can, can we pull back the storage area a bit from Knoll Road and have it in line with the 30-foot yard, 30-foot front yard setback there with additional plantings for screening rather than a chain link fence, perhaps a stockade fence so that it isn't visible from the roof?
We would be amenable to a buffer with maybe evergreen plantings because I know there are homes along that border of the property, but which the maintenance yard happened to predate. But we would be amenable, I don't know.
But I think we're here because it never really got site plan approval.
Understood.
So that's why we're here. You know, it is a customary and incidental accessory use to this kind of development. In that sense, it's permitted. I just would like to hear some testimony that it is, all this maintenance equipment, all the construction equipment is purely for this site. It is not being used by outside contractors or at other work sites.
Oh, oh, it, oh, it is. It is for this site without a doubt. It is, it is outside contractors who are staging here for this development. But what comes in here is being used on the site.
So the outside contractors aren't storing any of their materials that they're, you know, bringing off site or?
No. When I, when I went there in May, there was, there was very little equipment there. In fact, the, the masonry area, and I think the pictures that we provided.
Are from May.
Were, were from May. That, that's correct. And, and there was very little there. There was, like I said, there, we saw brick and we saw block and cement, and he had a mixer there. And that area was, looked like it was active. It was actively working. And then it was cleared, and then we had the dumpsters. And in speaking, you know, with the property manager, the dumpster is definitely something that probably just got away from them. They, you know, they wanted to move them off the site to bring the new ones in. Where do we put them? We'll put them over there, and we'll get someone to take them away. Over time, they sat there for probably too long, and, and they would admit that. And, and now it's, it's time to, you know, to get them off the site and, and to move them along. But then there, you know, there was one, and we returned. We went once on May 2nd, and then once on May 15th, I think. Some of the photographs are from May 15th. And those photographs, I think they show a large stockpile of Belgium block. Because the Belgium block gets hit by the plows and things like that. And that, that is probably the most active thing that they do with the, the masonry.
Has there been any movement or cleanup on, like, the dumpster? Are those dumpsters still there today?
I, I went there tonight. There's still active things there. I don't know if anything has been pulled off the site quite yet, but I, I don't, I don't know if the broken dumpsters were there. It was dark by the time I got there. I, I don't know. And they were, they were in the back, and, you know, they were kind of away from the work area, kind of tucked in when I was there. And I think they're, they're in the photographs that I provided.
And the concrete work is just not for Belgium blocks, but they're for sidewalks, stoops. And, and, you know, this is where all the material is, is staged and stored.
What's underneath these tarps in this one picture?
I'm sorry, what picture are you referring to?
This packet right here.
It, it should be, our, our photographs are numbered.
Photo seven.
Photo seven. That is, that is actually outside of the maintenance area. And that is, I, I was there that day. That, that is here. And I, I'm not sure exactly what was there. That, that is in the parking lot adjacent to it. There was a vehicle that just had a tarp on it, and I don't know what, what the other, the, the leftmost one. The, the center one was a vehicle with a tarp on it, and I don't know what was on the leftmost one. But that, that was not in the maintenance area. That was in the parking lot.
Regardless, I must admit that if this were a greenfield development, I'd want a heck of a lot more detailed site plan. I'd want noticing where the, the concrete pads would be. I would want a better understanding of what kind of buffering you would have.
Understood.
I would want a segmentation of where you're going to allow your workers to, to deposit things, and when they could access this maintenance yard so it doesn't interfere with the life of the people in the apartment complex. That would be a much more complex presentation to us.
Okay.
To my mind, this is almost an incomplete presentation. You're, you've just got this big yard that you're dumping stuff in, and you want to continue, continue doing that. And that makes me feel very poorly about this.
Okay. So we, we did not resubmit these plans, and I think that was just a timing issue. We thought we were on for the 4th, and then we ended up getting pushed to the 18th. I could continue on, and we could go over some of the ideas. They weren't submitted. So I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't, I've been hesitant just because I haven't submitted these plans. But if we want to continue on, we had the idea of, again, the dumpster pad, and I'm looking, we can.
I'm going to, sorry to interrupt. I'm just going to mark, have you mark this as Exhibit A2?
Two, okay. So I'm going to, I'm referring to A2 and 11, 18, 24. And what I've drawn is just an area where the dumpsters would be organized, and then some of the material could be stockpiled behind concrete blocks in order to access it the way you traditionally see that. So here, we could put the material. Here, this would continue to be the maintenance yard. And then the dumpsters, all the other dumpsters would be removed, and we would have a concrete pad for four dumpsters. And those, again, those are the large 20-yard contain, I'm calling them dumpsters, I'm sorry, containers. And these are for the removal of, of, you know, the, like we said with the apartments, some of the, some of the sheet rock and whatever else gets damaged or whatever else has to be done. Those are taken to, you know, sometimes a bathroom needs to be renovated. That generates a lot of waste, and, and that would go to the dumpsters, the, the large containers. And we could put that on a pad. We could add the material. We could continue with the main, the, with the masonry area. And I think there was a suggestion about landscaping around the outside, changing the fence from a chain link fence to a, to a solid fence, we've already heard, and moving the fence back. And I, I think we've agreed to that. So I, I believe it's a 50-foot front yard setback.
Uh, yes.
But I draw the line on here. So if that's where that is, that probably takes about 15 feet out of the front area, if I drew that line.
Mr. De Piero?
This first photograph dated May 15th.
Yes.
I'm looking at some apartments, kind of have a nice view of this very messy yard. Everything you've discussed so far, I don't see where you're improving the view from those tenants.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that, that, that's a, that's a good observation. I think if we put the landscaping around it, I, I should say that it is a good suggestion. It's a very good observation. It has, it has been this way for a long time, and they haven't received any complaints. But, but by all means, I mean, I think we're here to hear the ideas, and, and we can put landscaping along the front if that buffers it out on either side of the fence. But we have to leave the gate open so we can access it.
I, I understand. I'm, I'm not sure what we're voting on. Do you continue to have a messy work yard? Or I don't see where we're actually voting on improvements that we, that you're proposing, that we can see, that would resolve all these concerns. I don't, I don't see it.
I, I think it is an application for the continual use of something. We're trying to get the site plan approval because it was never part of site plan approval as.
Understood that.
Right.
Understood that. But it's a messy yard, and, and your little overview there is, in my opinion, not cleaning up.
Absolutely.
What I see in these photographs.
Understood.
Yep. Before, before we go on here, we have, we have clearly a number of problems with this application.
Yes, understood.
We would be much, much happier with a more detailed site plan and with what you're proposing to do with it. Now, we have several options here, but I think the best one is to ask you if you'd be willing to carry the case to the next meeting while you put together a number of ideas as to how this should be, and then submit that to the board. The second option, which I would prefer not to do, would be that you would agree to work with our professionals to come up with a plan.
I think the first, if I may, I think the first option, we'd be willing to carry this. I'm not sure when the date is for the next meeting, and, and might it be prudent if we're going into December to maybe make it January? So we have more time to submit detailed plans of how we would improve the lot to resubmit to the board. So I don't know as far as noticing purposes.
We want concrete pads.
Yeah.
We want better buffering.
The concrete pads are likely going to trigger variance for increasing your impervious coverage.
Okay.
So those calculations will have to be figured.
I've got a suggestion too, if I may.
Sure.
If you visit one of these yards that sell stone and masonry, okay, they'll have, they'll have a bin.
Yes.
Where the bricks are stored. They'll have a bin where the cinder block is stored.
Right. That's, that's what we were, what we said as far as concrete.
Well, stockpile the area, yeah. It's, it's.
But stockpiled a lot neater than this.
Understood. Let me ask procedurally, if we carry it to the next.
So you prefer January, correct?
I'm thinking that would be more prudent for us to get more detail time-wise. The only question is, are we able to carry it without renoticing, or do we outdo?
I think if there's an additional variance, you might have to renotice anyway, just because that wasn't included in the, in the first notice.
Well, let's, let's discuss.
Well, if, if there's a, I understand. We're, we're just, we're following the recommendation. I think it was a recommendation from the engineer. But I, I understand that if we're in violation of the impervious coverage requirement on the 43 acres, then, then I, I agree.
You're already over, so.
I, I assume we probably are. They didn't really pay too much attention to impervious coverage years ago, I guess. But, but that, that makes sense. So I guess we would, we would have to notice, Mark, for, for that.
Nor, are we?
January 13th.
I think that's a Friday, right?
No, 13th.
No, that should be Monday.
Maybe that's December 13th. And then there's a Friday, the 13th coming up.
How about with?
December.
Yep, so you're willing to?
We, we are willing to carry our, our application.
With all tolling of time and other things that might be involved with regard to the case?
Well, after, after hearing the comments from the board, I think it would be prudent for us to get a little more, more detail and incorporate the comments and suggestions the board made in our revised plans. So I think a January date would probably give us time, more use, time to, to get that done and.
And I'm assuming you'll bring your witness and we'll have a, a fairly thorough discussion of the case, even though we've already had this discussion.
We'll continue.
All right. I'm, I'm doing that for the public's consumption here because the public is clearly interested in this.
Understood, and I appreciate the comments that the board has made tonight.
What we're planning on doing tonight for the public's consumption, so rather than having you ask questions that they're.
We don't want to ask questions, we want to actually ask what we propose. No, no, I've got a slew of questions I want to ask and I do not want to be silenced at this point in time. I want you to be informed of our concerns as neighbors on this.
I'm sorry, sir, we can't, you can't provide testimony or comments unless it's that, it's not the time for that right now. I'm sorry, sir, I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
Let, let me just say that the way that we see this going, they are asking that we carry the case. We are probably going to grant that carrying. There will be a whole nother meeting on January 13th. My suggestion to you is that you present yourself to the attorney and his client now or as soon as you can and discuss these things because many of your problems may be addressed by the new plans.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, we, we can't take any comments at this time. The chairman's explained that if you have comments or concerns that you would like to raise, you're going, the board is going to adjourn the hearing on this application. If you have individual concerns, you need to reach out to the applicant's attorney to try to have them addressed in the revised plans.
And if I could state, my name, address and phone number is on the bottom of the notices that everyone received. I didn't bring a bunch of business cards, but if you look at the notice, then I'd be happy after.
Just, just a moment, let's just do the procedural stuff here first. The applicant has requested that we, you know, January 13th is a new hearing date that we're going to carry the case, so do I hear a motion to carry the case to January 13th?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That closes tonight's hearing on this application, but you will get a whole new meeting to voice any concerns over the new plans that they're going to present. And again, I suggest very highly that you consult with the applicant and their attorney and their representatives to see if your concerns can be met in their new modified plans.
Can I just say something? You seem to be, you know, glancing over at that.
We're, we're, sir, we are not glancing over anything. Everything will be on.
There are township ordinances that have been.
But that's not.
I'm sorry, sir, this is not the time for public comment. If you have other concerns, you can always submit your concerns in writing to the board as well and you can submit them to the applicant and you can come to the January 13th meeting and raise your comments then.
Something was submitted, but it does not get passed out to the board members.
Yes, but you will have another opportunity. This is not the only opportunity. The January 13th meeting is when you will have the opportunity to address this board, to address the applicant. It's actually best if you consult with the applicant and their representatives beforehand because you may very well get your concerns handled by them.
We have been addressing consistent for several years.
I, I understand that, but this is the way we're proceeding.
Okay, thank you. And again, my information for those that are here is on the bottom of the notice and I'd be happy to speak with anyone from the public, so your concerns could be incorporated in the new plans we submit.
There you go.
And thank you very much.
Sure.
For hearing our.
Are there any other items to come before the board tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So water.
Save that for another day.